So we do have Tom online, so. Is there a caller? Can I ask who's calling in, please?
Yes, this is Lynn Cochran.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I would like to welcome everyone here today and our viewing audience to the October 22nd, 2020 meeting of the City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustments. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a pager or cellphone, please turn it off now, even if in silent mode it may interfere with the room's electronics. My name is Angela Lebach, Chairman of the Members... Chairman, and the members present here are Dan Darland, and then on the phone we have Tom Quinn and Lynn Cochran. And wait, shall you guys do?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we also have Scott Coops and Becky?
Laura Berkeley.
Laura Berkeley. The Zoning Board of Adjustments is a five-member judiciary board established by state law. We are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council to serve without compensation for a five-year term. We normally meet twice each month to hear approvals involving hardship and strict applications of current zoning laws. We may also grant special exceptions and rule out a variety of discretionary permits. Any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? Motion for approval?
A motion to approve.
Second?
This is Lynn Cochran, I second.
Passed? All right, new business? Oh, can I have a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
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 We ready for new business then? Okay, new business. Request HB 20-10 of Tanner Brandt on behalf of Tommy's Car Wash for a hardship variance on 4200 Brady Street for a second freestanding sign. Proposed sign will be located at the northeast Brady Street, 42nd corner of the lot, and the site has been approved, has an approved freestanding sign on the northwest corner of the property. Section 17 dot 12 dot 060 dot D limits the property to one freestanding sign. Can I hear the staff report?
Scott Coops, Community Planning, and actually Development and Neighborhood Services as well. So this quick request is before us. The sign package came in with signs on all four building elevations which are allowed. It also came with a freestanding sign which is allowed, and they placed that at the corner of Welcome Way and 42nd. However, in addition to that one freestanding that they're allowed, they wish to do a second one, and they wish to place that at Brady and 42nd Street. And so that's what the request is here today. And we're determined if there's a hardship variance, warranting a hardship variance to be approved today by the board. In our staff report, it shows the rear sign of the building. We actually have a photograph on page two which shows you, it's already been installed and the building's been built. It's a newer building. So it's the next page down from this one, right below this sign.
Hey Scott, I'm really having trouble hearing you.
Yeah, I'll take my mask off.
Yeah, I'm really having trouble hearing everybody there.
Can you hear me now?
A little better, yeah.
A little better? We can turn this mic up a little bit.
That might help, yeah, I appreciate that.
So, as drivers are driving down Brady Street, on their left is the building. It's a red and white building, it's the Tommy's Car Wash, and the rear of the building has a sign just recently installed, and that will be visible from motorists driving north on Brady. The actual sign, the monument sign that's being installed, is going in right here, this kind of dark spot, that's where the sign would be. It is interesting to note that on the petitioner's diagram, they've show the sign actually facing northeast and southwest, which actually wouldn't be visible from Brady Street, so I don't know if that's a mistake. Did we verify the petitioner is online?
Yes.
Okay, good. So that's where it's going to be located. And this photo is, I brought it up because staff feels that this sign here, ready up and on the building, is going to be a lot more visible to people going down the street than this smaller sign over here that is going to be harder to read. And right now, they need to switch the orientation, which they can do if they propose that. So in our evaluation, there's different things we look at. Is the... The first thing that we look at is the strict application of the ordinance. Has it resulted in a hardship? The applicant in response to that has said that, you know, they took a photo of these shrub trees that are on, partly on their property and partly in the right-of-way, which the petitioner has the right to maintain. So the shrub trees could be taken down if they feel that's a restriction to visibility. But, so their response was that the shrub trees are in the way. The second item that they've mentioned is that there's an eight-foot drop there, and the site does drop, but as we've seen in the other photo here that's still on the screen, even though there's a drop, this sign is still visible from the roadway. So staff's response was that the freestanding sign is convenient to the petitioner. They do have a sign readily visible, as it is. The second criteria we look at is the physical surroundings and characteristics. For example, the slope that they mentioned. That is an actual reality, there is a slope there. However, staff doesn't feel that the slope takes away the visibility of their existing rear sign. And the third item that we look at, actually there's four, so the fourth, the third one out of four, is the plight of the owner due to unique circumstances that only apply to this property. There are a number of properties up and down Brady and Welcome Way where they have frontage on both Brady and Welcome Way, and they're all subject to the same one freestanding sign requirement. That's all that they're allowed. It's at the discretion of the property owners to place the signs where they see they get the most benefit from them, and this petitioner has chosen to place their sign on Welcome Way and 42nd rather than at the entrance, which would they have a directional sign for, or at the proposed location of the second sign. The hardship variance, if granted, would not alter the essential character. Staff feels that because they would be singled out and treated differently than anybody else coming forward with the signs and have a second freestanding, that it would create a proliferation of extra freestanding signs, and it would change the character of the area. So having reviewed these four requirements, staff has recommended denial of the request as proposed. Let me look at one thing if I see anything else I need to add at this time. Oh, the, we have put out notices to all property owners within 200 feet, and we have not received any comments at this time. Any questions for me before I sit down?
So this picture just is heading up Brady?
Correct, this photo is facing north as motorists are driving north on Brady towards 46th Street, towards 42nd Street. This is just a couple lots north of the old Toys R Us.
Because I drove by there today, and I saw the sign like on the front of the building.
Right, they also have a sign...
But I didn't see that one, is that not installed yet?
Yeah, so they have a sign on, like I said, every elevation, so there's one on the east elevation, which you could also see from Brady, but that's a little harder to see because of the design of the building. But the front on the north has a sign, and the west elevation has a sign as well. They have a directional sign at the entrance of the driveway to the site, which is halfway between Welcome Way and Brady on 42nd Street itself.
Is the applicant present?
Are there any more board questions?
Are there any more board questions?
No questions from me.
Scott, this is Lynn Cochran. Could you just, for me briefly, repeat your staff summary? Your recommendations to not move forward with this?
Right, the four criteria have not been met. Staff feels that it's a convenience to the petitioner that the scrub brush could be removed, that the rear sign that is there is visible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Hello, yes, this is Tanner Brandt with Pace's Lodging. Do you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead and present your case.
So, yeah, we're, you know, our Tommy's Car Wash is placed in between the two oneways. Obviously, Welcome Way going south, Brady going north. Here you've got, you know, the picture that's showing here shows from the closest lane to the Tommy Wash. You know, it's a four-lane highway, so someone being over in the third or fourth lane is going to have a tougher time seeing that small sign and, you know, going 45 miles per hour. Thinking that, you know, with that topography going down eight, nine, 10 feet, that we're just a little lower in there, and they're going to have a tough time seeing that sign on the backside there. So we're just thinking that, you know, for the safety matter, if someone trying to cross lanes or see-through would be very, you know, beneficial and just helpful for the community to have a have a monument sign out on that corner, so it's more visible. And, uh... Yeah, and the sucker on the building is kind of further back low, you know, further away from the road, tougher for people driving on the street. Where we'd have it farther out on the corner, much more visible, have a better visibility triangle for drivers that are, you know, in that second, third, fourth lane away from our site. Just also with the tree cover on the backside there, you're not seeing, you know, it's not on our property. We don't have a lot of control over that on the south side. So, you know, you're having a tougher time as you're driving north on Brady, kind of identifying what it is, you know, if a customer wanted to turn in there, if they didn't know what it was, and decided they wanted to go look at it, you know, it would be safer if they could see kind of what the business was and what they were looking at.
Any questions from our board members?
There was just one discrepancy I noticed. Scott had mentioned that the shrubbery on the south side of the building could be cut down, but then the petitioner said that they did not control that, so how... If the petitioner doesn't control that, Scott, how could they how could they control the...
So the photo... Yep, sir, I'll address that, the photo. On page three of the staff report, it's after the photo of the actual sign, it's one page below this one. It shows, this is a photo submitted by the petitioner, and this is looking at, looking straight west, down the hill, kind of in front of where the utility pool is. Probably more than half of that vegetation is in the public right-of-way, which it is the property owner's responsibility to maintain. So they have the right to cut that, to trim it, to remove any scrub brush. Also, there is a portion of it that is on their property. Obviously, they can do anything they want to, it's on their property as well. I didn't, driving by and when I was on the site, I didn't see a lot of trees between the building to the south, immediately to the south, and this site, and the photo. The leaves haven't all dropped, so I don't see any other trees that affect the visibility of their building.
Scott has a point of reference. Can you show where that is on this photo?
Sure, that's a good point, so. The photo of their brush and scrub is right here, and again, they took the photo almost directly perpendicular to the road when they took the photo. But that's where the scrub brush is.
This is Chris Mack, I work with Tanner. And I guess what Tanner was trying to get at, you can see on this picture, there's a tree just right there. What our concern is, is if you are in that that right lane or middle lane, by the time, I don't know how many feet you are back on that photo in that vehicle, but once you're, at that point, you're actually too close to the intersection to cut three lanes, and that's where the safety factor would be. Once you back up another 200, 300 feet where you would actually see that sign, that tree would be in that line of sight if you're further further back, and you might not have that time to react, which could potentially cause some issues. Where if it's up on the corner, you can possibly see that better, because you won't be... And we don't want our drivers to be looking off to the way off to the left side or right side of the mountain driving. We want to, I'd rather want to keep this sign as close to that intersection.
So if I can ask, if you, this is Dan Darland, if you're further south, say 200, 300 feet from this, where that tree would be in the way, would the proposed sign up on the corner be substantial enough to be able to read from that distance? How large is it allowed to be? Is that a question for staff? Well, for both, how large is it allowed to be, and then do we...
Okay, so I'll also answer how large the sign is allowed to be. The sign is allowed to be zero square feet in size. They already have a second, another freestanding, but if this was their only freestanding sign, it could be 200 square feet. And then the location of it that they're proposing is this dark area right here. There is a dark construction sign almost in the same spot as where their proposed sign is going to go. And this construction sign is 32 square feet, so it would be larger than that construction sign.
Thank you, so for the Tommy folks, do you feel, so if it's a 10 by 20 sign, for example, from that distance with your logo, is that is that substantial enough to be able to read from that distance back? And then are we expecting, if we see it from the right lane, 200 feet back from this, that we're going to make three lane changes to north or turn?
Yeah, I think having that brighter monument sign, I think it would be substantial enough for someone to, you know, at least catch their eye, and they could see it more so than if they were looking at that, you know, more towards the building, away from the road.
Yeah, this is Chris again. I mean, you can see just from the darker construction sign how visible, and our monument sign would be in about the same location, how visible that actually is, right now. So if we're doing a larger red, red and gray monument sign, I think it would definitely pop out with white lettering is what we're proposing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody in the audience in favor?
I showed Ann.
Did you want to speak?
I don't think we should be scaring businesses away, though. I didn't come for this topic, but it's interesting. I don't, yeah, I mean, this gentleman mentioned that the area, kind of around there, the sign might take away from the area. There's been an empty strip joint next to it for years. That looks like crap. I don't think, I don't think a nice new sign with a new business investing in our city is going to take away from the neighborhood. That's just my opinion, though. I like when people come and spend money in our city. I think we should be nice and have some more doing.
Five second motion.
Anybody in the audience opposed? Applicant, any final comments?
Nope, I think we're okay at this time.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and ask for a motion.
I just had a question. The first person in the audience that spoke, I could not hear anything they said. Did anyone paraphrase what the comment was?
They can come up and speak. We asked them to come up and speak, but they didn't want to. But, yeah, the problem with not coming up and speaking is that people can't hear, so if they would like to come up and speak, they can.
Is that, was that a board member that's asking that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that real quick. Where's the microphone?
It's right above you.
Right above you.
I like when people spend money in our city. Don't be mean to new businesses. That's paraphrased.
Your name?
I'm Brian McLean, thank you.
Okay. Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any board discussion?
This is Lynn Cochran, could I ask for some clarification? That's to approve the second sign there, is that the motion?
Right, this, the the motion would be to approve a second freestanding sign at the intersection of 46, I'm sorry, 42nd and Brady, in addition to the freestanding sign they have at Welcome Way and 42nd. And so it'd be under 200 feet. So a yes vote would be to approve that, and no vote would be to deny it.
Deny the sign.
Thank you.
Call for a vote?
Quinn?
No.
Darland?
No.
Cochran?
No.
And Lu Beck?
No.
Okay, the motion fails, 04.
We ready for the next case, huh?
Yes.
All right, so request SU 20-06 of Gregory Matthews of 619 Marquette Street, owned by Sonny Property for construction, for consideration of a special use for a minor vehicle repair shop in the existing structure located on the northeast corner of the lot. Property is zoned C-1 Neighborhood Commercial. Section 17 dot 08 dot 020 of the Davenport Municipal Code allows for minor vehicle repair service in the C1 District, subject to special use approval in compliance with section 17 dot 08 dot 030 dot CC.
This is Scott Coops from Development and Neighborhood Services. So again, this is a request. Special uses are uses that need additional conditions, potentially, to be a good fit or a good match for a neighborhood. This neighborhood has multiple family dwellings to the east and the south, and single-family dwellings in the west and also to the north. There is one commercial use adjacent immediately to the west, and that's a small convenience or grocery store with a laundry mat. So again, this use is allowed in a C1 District if the board feels it's compatible with the neighborhood. And so in our review of this, staff has three criteria that the ordinance lays out that we have to review it against. Before I get to that, there are some photos here on the second page. This first photo on the top shows the pawn shop, which is on that subject property site. However, the garage building is just to the east, and access will not be from 7th Street. This is 7th Street here. So the access, we'll show you that later, but that's going to be from the south side. And the photo below this, this is also looking south. We just moved further down 7th Street. This is the building in which the auto repair would occur. And again, the petitioner has said they don't plan to have any access here. We have suggested a condition that they'd not have any access here. But this is the backside of the building, which actually faces the street on 7th Street, where they're going to be doing the work in. And adjacent here, one lot to the east is the multiple-family dwelling. And again, this is just a one more shot, a little bit further down. It shows a little bit more of that multiple-family dwelling. It is a two-story building. So, the criteria that we evaluate, actually, before we get into the evaluation, there are certain uses in this new code that we have, which approved in 2019, that have, they're called use standards. And so, these uses the code sets forth are set aside so that these uses are not going to be a detriment to the neighborhoods. They meet a certain standard, a certain level of of care and protection against the impact on adjacent neighbors by the new use. And those, for this case, it's a minor vehicle repair, and these conditions are seven conditions there. And so, no matter where you are in the city, you need to meet these requirements, whether or not you need a special use or not. But I have put them here because it's going to show, it shows how the business would be operating, that they need to meet these requirements in order to operate. So they can have only 15 days for a vehicle to be stored after it's repaired. Vehicles cannot be repaired in the front yard or the side yard. It has to be in the rear yard of the property. The petitioner has actually said that they are not going to be doing any repair outside. They said all of their repairs would be inside, and so staff has also made that a condition. Storage of merchandise and auto parts, any of that, none of that can be outside. It all has to be inside. And so, if you're adjacent to residential, which this is, there is a required fence for screening. That's the third condition, or third requirement. Out number four is what we talked about. The repairs must be in the rear yard, or can be the rear yard, which we've already said they're not going to be in the rear yard. You can have no, partially dismantled or junked vehicles can be there. We had a comment from an adjacent neighbor, which I'll get to. We had one comment from the neighbors in this area, and the one comment was that they're pro-business, but they didn't want to see this property be blight, or blight on the neighborhood, to have junked vehicles on the site. So, our normal standards, no matter where you're located in the city, you're not allowed to store junk vehicles there. So that would be a municipal infraction if someone didn't meet this requirement. Number six, sale of vehicles is prohibited. That was also a concern of the adjacent neighbor. And so, we have informed him via email that that isn't allowed. I don't know if Rusty's here today, but if he is, he'll speak later on. But that was a potential concern of his, he didn't want to see vehicles sold on the site, and that's not allowed. And then, of course, we add this one just because there are people that try to do it, and if you don't have it in black and white, they'll do it. But no repair work can occur in the public right-of-way. So, not only can you not be in the front yard or the side yard, you can't be on the right-of-way. Some people block the right-of-way or do actual repair in the alley or in the street, and so that's a condition that's there as well. So when we get to the criteria that we evaluate this request against, the first criteria is, does the establishment and maintenance of operation of this use endanger public health, safety, or welfare? That's a pretty broad category. You know, if you operate within our building code standards, and when, under our, you know, standards for noise, you're not making noise, this gentleman is going to be inside. We're going to have a condition that the work be inside. There shouldn't be any noise outdoor that would endanger health or welfare. So each business is different, however, and unique. And so, we would want this use to be restricted just to this particular owner, and if he would... I think there's just one owner. And if he would, I think there's just one, one, or they would, if they would sell it in whole or in part, then it would have to come back to this board to be reviewed. The second criteria we look at is, the proposed special use, is it compatible with the general land use and adjacent properties? So I talked about the land use when we first started, that there was multiple family to the, the east, and mostly single-family to the west, um, just that one business next door. Small auto mechanics, this is occurring in a, a, a one-stall garage with only one, one garage door, and we'll show that when we get down to the next photo. But, so the scale of this is at appropriate scale, it's a scale that, if you lived in the neighborhood, it would be convenient for you to have a place that you could walk to while your car's being repaired, you could walk home, you could walk to the grocery store while you wait for your car. So it's a convenient location, and the scale is compatible, and staff feels, with this neighborhood. Uh, the last criteria, is the use consistent with the spirit and intent of this ordinance? There are purpose statements within our new code and in, within our Davenport twenty thirty-five land use plan. We do, um, encourage there to be mixed nodes of limited commercial within neighborhood districts. Our new code does allow for a neighborhood service establishment to be on a residentially-zoned property if the building is a commercial building, and if it's a limited number of uses. So, this isn't, uh, out of the ordinary to have commercial right next to residential, it just, there needs to be, um, appropriate conditions so that it's not of a scale too large, it's not compatible. So those are the three criteria that we looked at, and, um, so staff does want to make sure that this business is operating correctly. So, our recommendation was for approval, but we do have conditions for that approval. So the number one, all those conditions that apply to small auto repair, that applies everywhere in town, I just restated that that is going to apply, so those seven requirements that I read earlier, those all are going to be required. Um, the second condition that I have, and this really is a condition, every special use that comes before this board can be revoked, should there be complaints. And I just put this out here in black and white, just so the applicant knows, so the public knows, that should there be complaints about this property, should there be actual violations, um, the petitioner would be given a chance to correct those, and if they don't correct them, and there's a repeated history of non-correction, then there, there could be a full revocation of the, the, uh, special use permit. The third condition is that we didn't want access from Seventh Street, we talked about that. Outdoor storage, that cannot be there, that's one of the seven use standards. Repair work shall be inside the building, that's what the petitioner said they were going to do. Um, so that's a little more protection than what the, the seven, uh, use standards require, so that's good, and that's another condition now that we put in here. Number seven, the use shall not be expanded, uh, it, it, it's a one-car garage now, or one-stall garage now. We feel, staff feels that that is compatible with the adjacent neighborhood, it, it doesn't lead itself to having four or five vehicles all being worked on at the same time, having four or five mechanics, having like a clerk or somebody, it just limits the number of personnel that's going to be there, and the amount of activity occurring. And we feel that's a, a good size to have, and we want to restrict that to not be any further than, or any larger than what it is already. We want areas that are going to be used for parking, there is parking, uh, behind the pawn shop, the yellow building that was in our photo. There's parking there that can be used for staff and for vehicles, they also have a driveway leading to the garage. If we could bring that photo up, I don't think we've shown that photo from the rear side, so there's where the parking is. And that's where the, the employees would park, and that's where customer vehicles could park. And then if we go down to the next photo, I believe it shows the actual front of the garage. And so this is, I'll, I'll bring this up in a condition, right now, there's a storage container, one of our conditions is it shouldn't be there. And I think maybe the next photo or two, here, so here's the, the southern elevation of the garage. And, um, this is where the cars would be brought into and worked on, uh, this face is the alley. Uh, these cars here are from the, are occupants of the multiple-family dwelling next door. So, sorry for the little side there, but, um,
Scott, while, while we're on this, um,
Yep.
So that fence between there has to be a screening fence, so they would have to put some cyclone slats or something in there to?
Correct, those, um, those seven conditions, or seven use standards that apply to minor auto repair that apply all throughout the city, that would require this fence to be a six-foot solid fence with the good side facing out towards the neighbors. Uh, there would also be a fence required over here next to the parking lot, and it, and parallel to the alley or along the alley. And so the other thing we ask for, so number nine, is that we want records of the, the people who are having their cars worked on, so it's easier for us to enforce the fifteen-day limitation on how many, how many days vehicles can be there. And then, as any business in town, uh, it should operate in conformance with city, uh, state, and federal regulations as well. Uh, condition eleven, the petitioner shall provide articles of incorporation of her equipment, or equivalent, equivalent, sorry, ownership documentation prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that makes sure that we know who owns it. So if the case did try to sell it later, we have that information on hand. And the last condition, the special use shall be limited to this owner only. Should the business be sold wholly or in part beyond fifty percent, the new special use permit shall be required, have to be opened up again, become here for a public hearing again in front of you. And so that's, um, the board's recommendation as our consi, conditions, uh, is there questions by the board?
What was that, um, outdoor storage circled in yellow on several of the pictures?
Right, so our,
And who does that belong to?
Yep, our, the new zoning code and our old zoning code both prohibited, uh, storage containers or shipping containers, or temporary storage containers is what they've been called. And that is a, a large storage container, it's not a, a small pod one, it's, uh, it's like a double size of those small pod containers. Um, that is there, as far as we know illegally, in 2014, there's an air photo where it does not show up. And in 2016, there is a photo where it does show up. Twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen were both under our previous zoning code, but at that time, we had a legal opinion from our, our legal staff that storage containers are illegal and they're not structures. And so, it's likely that that was placed there without asking what our codes are, or without our, I mean, definitely without our permission. But, um, I don't know if they knew the rules when it was put there, and that, I believe, was a previous owner, uh, not the existing owner of the site that put that there. The purchase was, I believe, in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, so it's, it's a relatively short sale, uh, that it's been, uh, under new ownership. And so, our, our code requires that that be removed, and so we, we will work with the property owner to have that removed. Lynn or Tom, do you have any questions?
Uh, I don't think the report, report was well done, Scott, I don't, I don't have any questions.
I agree, I think the report was very well done, I know that we had, uh, an objection raised by a citizen, is that person there to speak today, or?
Well, so, now that we're done with the, uh, staff report, uh, it'll be a chance for the petitioner to talk, and then after petitioner talks, we'll have the, anyone speaking in favor or in opposed to it, they will speak.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Okay, is the applicant here to present their case?
Hi, my name is Greg Matthews.
Can you wait till you get to the microphone and say your name again, thank you.
Hi, my name is Greg Matthews. I'm here to present how the special use permit will, uh, not be a bother to the adjacent residential and/or in the future to come. For the most part, uh, the neighbors can vouch that I've been a lifelong mechanic, the go-to guy for kids on bicycles or grandma's car brakes. And, uh, it was a great idea to put, get a shop going in the community right there where local friends and family are. Was recently a mechanic for six years for Jeff West, and a couple for J.D. Byrder, so I'm well-known in the neighborhood between people that live there and owners of the businesses. And, uh, with like the noise, always the noise, I got, we got electric guns, so we're not running air impacts all the time, where you're hearing air impacts. The privacy fence that was requested to go along the chain link from Seventh, the whole property line of the residential, and then the alley, and in between the corner of the building to the alley, I did have a, uh, a quote and a material list that I gave him for what it's going to cost, and we will put that up to keep eye stores or cobbling from being seen. All storage will be done on inside the building. There's a, there's a little shed there too, that for, you know, outside lawn, like mowing the yard, or, uh, a couple of rakes or whatever. But there was no work to be performed on the outside, it was already the plan. Everything was going to be inside the building where it was safe and locked up, secure, out of sight.
Can I answer what your proposed hours of operations are?
Um, yes, sir, that'd be, uh, eight to five, Monday through Friday, uh, one, nine to one-thirty on Saturday, and then closed on Sundays.
Scott, then, for the staff, is, are there any restrictions?
The, uh, the hours of operation and the days of operation can be, uh, conditioned by the board as they would see appropriate. When we used to have home occupations in our previous code, a lot of times, when we had businesses operating outside of an actual residential house, they, they typically didn't want activities occurring after six P.M. So, the hours proposed here are not objectionable to staff.
I have a, I have a question in regards, where is this repair shop located? Is it in the same building as Pawn Shop, or is it in this little garage?
It's in the same building as the Pawn Shop, yes, the Pawn Shop, the old Pawn Shop is two, divided into two. And I'm in the back half of it, and the garage that's separate from the building is where the work will be done. All storage and, um, uh, bookkeeping and, uh, desk work will be done inside the building that's, the address is to. That little garage where the hand, with that garage, where that little hand is, that garage is where the auto work's going to be done in. The part of the building, that's the back part of the six nineteen Marquette, that'll be where I'm, where we store parts and, uh, where our office will be, and of course, that's where the security, um, system is, and on the other corner of the building inside. But all auto, the auto work will be done in the garage that's adjacent to the building on the northeast corner of the property.
Okay, that makes more sense, so the, all the work's going on in this small garage, because you're doing all your storage and things like that in the,
Yes.
in the Pawn Shop building itself.
For reference, that's on page six of the staff report. The photo of the garage.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience opposed? I see none. Any final comments from the applicant?
Anyone?
Oh.
Anyone in favor?
Oh, anyone in favor? I see nobody, okay. Any comments from, final comments from the applicant?
I, I just, I hope and pray that, uh, we all have a nice evening, and that, uh, we all come by the shop this evening.
Thank, can I ask for a motion?
Is there, uh,
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there opportunity for discussion first?
Oh, sorry.
Could, I'd like to make his proposed hours of operation restriction. To keep the noise from being heard in the community.
And what were you thinking?
I, I would motion that his proposed hours of operation are written in as a restriction.
I, I was attempting to write down those hours, it was Monday through Saturday until five, I don't, I didn't catch the opening time.
Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday, eight, eight A.M. to five P.M., and Saturday, nine to one-thirty. Some days closed.
Um, so staff doesn't have any objections to having the hours, um, restricted, however, if the, the applicant wants to, you know, work till two-thirty on some Saturdays, I, you know, I don't know what the board feels if, too late on Saturday is an issue, or if it's not, but I, I just kind of try to put this out there that, if you're not offended by a different hour, maybe, maybe look at the outside hours that you're acceptable with.
So I would motion, um, for his hours to be limited Monday through Saturday, um, eight to six.
Okay, thank you.
So that was the, the first motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Does the call for a vote?
Uh, now we can have board discussion on the, the motion that's out there.
Board discussion.
So just to clarify, so the motion has been made, um, with the twelve conditions that staff, uh, has already listed, plus the additional condition of hours, operating hours funded through Saturday, eight to six.
That's a good point, I don't think it was actually worded that way. I would ask for a, a re-motion to include the conditions.
Lynn Cochran, this, I wish to move for a,
Hold, hold on a second, Attorney Tom Warner wishes to speak.
So, City Attorney Tom Warner, I think where you're at is we've had a motion and a second on an amendment to the conditions to add the business hours. You've asked for a board discussion on that particular motion, so it sounds like that's concluded, and so a vote on the motion to amend is in order. And then you can go back to the main motion with those conditions.
Okay, I guess I'd make a motion to add the hours amendments.
So I'll do a roll call now, this is, a yes vote is, uh, approval of the, uh, a condition that would have the hours on it, which would be Monday through Saturday, eight to six. And I'll take roll call, I'll say, Cochran?
Yeah.
Darland?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yeah.
And Luwak?
Yes.
So that, that amendment, or the hours is approved? Uh, now we're back to the original motion, which I didn't hear, I mean,
I believe there's been a motion, but I will make a motion to approve the petition.
Is that with the conditions?
Yeah, I had originally, I, I had originally made the motion to approve it as it was written, and then we, we went down the,
Okay, so when you mean as it is written, does that include the conditions, then?
Well, originally, no. I, I would make a motion now to,
Uh, Mr. Quinn, hold on please.
Right, so, so you, you've had a motion and a second on the main motion, then you had amendment to that. So now you're back on discussion of the main motion as amended, or just a roll call vote on the, the main motion?
Right, I guess I was asking a clarification, because the original main motion, I don't know if it included the conditions of this, this staff report, or if it was just for approval.
This, this, okay, so is somebody willing to move the main motion as amended?
Yes.
As amended?
Yeah, I think I did that, I think I had motioned the original approval of the twelve conditions, and then we, then we talked about the additional condition.
Yeah.
I don't know what's the,
Okay.
So now we're looking at, we're looking for a second on, uh, on the motion, uh, to approve as amended.
Second.
Okay, we can call them off then?
So this is a yes vote for approval of the special use permit subject to the twelve conditions plus an additional condition that was added via amendment, which restricts the hours from Monday through Saturday, eight to six P M. And I'll ask for a vote from Darland?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
And Luwak?
Yes.
Motion's approved four to zero.
Ready for the next case then? Okay. Uh, request S U twenty dash zero seven of Ryan Kofe at fourteen sixty West Third Street for consideration of a special use for a bar in a C one district. Table seventeen dash zero eight dash one of the Davenport Municipal Code requires a special use for a bar on property zone C dash one, neighborhood commercial district.
Scott Kofe, Development and Neighborhood Services. Uh, this is another s- special use permit, uh, and like the previous case, this is a bar, it, it's, it's allowed to be in a C one district only if there is an approved special use permit with it. This neighborhood, um, uh, as the zoning map shows, it's a mixed use neighborhood. There's industrial mixed use, a half block to the north. There's some scattered multiple family. There is single family and further to the south, there's C two, which is our, uh, general, our, our neighborhood commercial district. Uh, actually, C two is our corridor commercial district, I have to get these new districts straight in my head, but, um, C one is our neighborhood and the C two is our corridor commercial. So that's the kind of mix of uses that we have in the area. Um, I looked at a Google photo that shows some of the businesses that are in the area. There's Acme Sign, uh, there's two credit unions. Uh, there's a bar on that same block, there's a temple, uh, and some other scattered uses as well. So again, as we evaluate these special uses, we have three conditions that we evaluate them with. They're, the first one, does the establishment, maintenance and operation of the proposed special use, will it endanger the public health, safety or welfare? With the plans the petitioner's put forward, uh, staff does not see that there's going to be anything outside of the, the business, they're approving the parking. And so staff doesn't see that there's going to be anything that would endanger public health or safety. They're going to put some new siding on the building and that will be done to code requirements. They have to put a new roof on as well, those will be done to code requirements. And the petitioner can go into more detail about the, the rehab work that's being done. The footprint of the building is not going to be changed. The second condition that we look at is the proposed special use, is it compatible with the general land of adjacent uses? So the zoning map I attached kind of shows you the different, different, uh, zoning districts where it allows various uses, that's why the, the bar at the end of the block is there. That's why the credit unions are there because they're on commercially zoned property. And we do have a mixed use area. We also have, again, a half block to the north is that I dash M U, which is a mixed use industrial district. It, it allows for industrial uses, it allows for commercial uses, it allows for, uh, residential in certain cases, so that use in itself is just another indicator that this is a mixed use area. Staff, um, has determined that the use meets the code requirements and is compatible with the adjacent neighborhood given what's proposed at the site. And I, and as the other request, I, I mentioned this request, um, we're, we're going to be asking in a condition that this use be limited to just this owner only. We know what they propose, we don't know what future business owners may propose, and so we're going to place a condition on this that only this owner be allowed to operate the bar and if they make any changes um, and with a new ownership, uh, that they would come forward with a special use through a public hearing again. The third condition, uh, the use in a specific location is consistent with the spirit, intent and the ordinance of the adopted land use policies. Our Davenport twenty thirty-five plan calls for, um, general commercial, which allows for a mix of, of commercial and residential, and it also calls for a corridor commercial in this area. And so it is in keeping with both of those, uh, land use categories and proposed, uh, uses of this area. Considering all these three requirements, staff has requested or recommends approval subject to the two conditions, uh, one, that the special use shall be limited to this owner only. Should the business be sold wholly or by more than fifty percent, a new special use shall be required and shall have a public hearing per Davenport Municipal Code requirements for zoning board of adjustments, special use, public hearings. The second condition is the petitioner shall provide articles of incorporation or other equivalent ownership documentations prior to the issuance of this certificate of occupancy. And are there any questions by the board for staff?
Uh, no questions from me, Scott?
Okay, is the applicant here to present his case?
Hi, Ryan Hoff, uh, W three L C, um, this, uh, proposed use is me and my aunt partnering together to start a bar. Uh, she's worked in bars for ages, uh, done all the cash accounting, done every supervising the bar, uh, from, uh, you know, uh, bars in downtown Chicago with thousands of people to, uh, tiny bars in Silvis. Uh, whereas, you know, I, uh, currently a little bit of a property developer investor. Uh, I own some real estate rental property in Davenport that's licensed and totally passed up the code and we've put lots of improvements on that. Um, I distributed a little bit of materials to the zoning board members present. I apologize that it's difficult to distribute that to, uh, those that aren't present. Those are just some examples of the kind of theme that we're aiming for in this bar. This isn't going to be some, uh, rodeo, loud nightclub or anything like that. We're intending to create a nerdy bar, which is something that doesn't really sort of exists in Davenport with analog, but doesn't exist in the, the concept that we're trying to create. Um, a place for people who are nerds, who like reading books, who like comic books, stuff like that, to come maybe play video games, read comic books. Uh, instead of sports on the T V, there would be electronic sports, video game sports streaming onto those TVs. And this would create a, a safe kind of welcoming place for people to hang out. Uh, a little bit about me, I'm a, I grew up in Muscatine, so I'm familiar with the Quad Cities area. You know, we'd always come up to the Quad Cities, uh, for anything fun. I live on Brady Street now, so you know, I'm a Quad Cities resident, my aunt has lived in the area her whole life as well. Uh, so we're, we're big, uh, local residents and understanding of this community. I would point out to the, the zoning board as well that this C one use can, eh, certain things like a restaurant would already be allowed. Um, and we wouldn't have to come here and do any of this. The only reason we're not starting with making this a nerdy restaurant is because, you know, me and my aunt put in like five thousand dollars each, we're going to make it a small, low intensity place where people who are nerds can come hang out, play video games, read comic books and enjoy being nerdy. Uh, eventually we might expand to food and stuff like that later, but I know that's a lot more work, a lot more stuff to do. So I would love to, to answer any questions that this, uh, zoning commission has and be available to, uh,
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, no questions from me, I mean, my presentation was well done, thank you.
I will ask one with the
I, thank you for the good summary, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Looking at the building, and you have the building and on the north side of the building, the garage, what, can I ask what is being used for what or how will the different pieces of the property be utilized?
Yes, and that actually reminds me to talk a little bit about the renovations we're doing as well, which is, uh, this, the building from the outside kind of looks a little ugly. We're using just the front area that used to be a carpet store for the longest amount of time. So it, it's not a very big area, it's about the front half, you might see it on one of those papers I, I, I provided to you and I think it was also submitted to the, the planning department when we, uh, provided that. Uh, but basically just the front half of the building will be the, the bar area. Uh, the rest of it will be pretty much as it is. Um, we are going to make significant improvements as well because, uh, the, the siding around the building, it's just not very pretty to me, it doesn't really, uh, make that whole area's character look very good. So we're going to spend a lot of money and redo the siding, possibly, uh, either a red vinyl siding or possibly, uh, fake brick siding so that, uh, there's all these red brick buildings kind of in that area, a couple of blocks away in either direction. So we kind of want to match that, match the character and kind of make this place look really nice. We'll put cameras all over the outside, we don't expect there to be problems with the kind of customers we're trying to attract. Uh, we plan to put solar panels on the back roof, uh, asphalt one of the back driveways, so there's more parking space. Uh, but for, as for the bar itself, just that front area to answer your question, so.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the, anybody in the audience in favor, please come forward?
People met me already once before, I'm Brian McLean. Um, I live at two twenty-three Washington, I owned, uh, the duplex there, it's two twenty-three and two twenty-five. I guess I'm a little bit, uh, kind of on the, the, toward the, the middle of this. Nothing I'm going to say is personal, obviously. Um, spent a great deal of time with Scott, uh, a year or two ago and several other folks in the, along the Rockingham corridor, working on the rezoning and kind of where we'd like to see things go in the future for that, uh, for that area in general. I have a couple of concerns. Um, some of my neighbors are, are here also and I kind of, kind of feel sort of the same way. At any given time when you walk down Third Street, if you look, there's an enormous number of cars parked on the street because, uh, my neighbor's behind me, the neighbor's next to me, the neighbor's on the corner. They don't have driveways because of the way the hill sits and uh, Scott, if you can, if you can go down between Third and Rockingham, that alley, there's no parking for those residents, so they can't park in their yard because it's up a hill, there's a, a block wall, whatever, they don't have a garage. There's nowhere to park, so they rely on, on street parking for their vehicles, one, two, three, whatever it is for their household, so. That's our first concern is the, the amount of parking. I know that he said, yeah, it's only going to be a couple of nerds reading comic books, and that's great, but is there, is there a way to limit the number of cars? It's kind of hard for, for you guys to say, ah, you're only allowed three cars a, at your, at your commercial business. So that's one of our, our first concerns. Second concern is, the neighborhood's already kind of a fragile work, to put it bluntly, we're sort of on a tipping point here. It's, it's, we have a lot of really nice people who have a lot of, uh, of great intent with, with where things are going. I, I fear that we already have too many bars. We have bricks on the corner, we have gun cheese at the other end, there's, there's bars all over the place. I'm not sure that we really need another bar, three houses away from a church. There's kids across, I mean, there's kids everywhere. I'm, I'm a little concerned with the precedent this would also set. It's an old building, I don't know, maybe Scott knows that, that the amount of work that it would take to, to make this a, uh, kind of a nice, clean addition to our, our, uh, our neighborhood. What I don't want is somebody coming in, taking an old building, spending ten bucks on some spray paint and, and, you know, a cardboard sign out saying, hey, this is my new, my new place. I realize it's not a gated community where we live, but I would like to see people who do want to come in and spend money and improve our neighborhood put a lot more effort into it than a cardboard sign and some spray paint and, and call it good. I don't know what, what conditions you guys can put in for that. I think the parking is probably the, the biggest concern. I know the city has, uh, resident only parking areas, but typically those cost those residents, uh, for those parking permits and the signage and, and whatnot. If that's something that could be, could be done in our area so that we are insured, uh, parking, I, I'm throwing all these out there, I don't have any idea how that works, but I know that there, there are options. If that's something that could be guaranteed to, to our neighborhood, uh, that we, we get to keep our, our on-street parking, I don't think that, you know, and maybe the live music, if we could make sure that there's not live music and, you know, big events that, that spill out onto the street, you know, sidewalk sort of deals or something like that. Those are, those are some main concerns that we have, I think, as, as a neighborhood. Again, nothing personal, just, it's kind of, uh, we already have a bunch of bars that you can't swing a dead cat without hitting a liquor store in that end of town. I don't know that we need another place to buy liquor. We need restaurants, we need little corner stores, we need stuff like that, we don't need another place to buy liquor. We've, we really just don't. You know, I, 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 I'm all for businesses, I got up here, my guy was putting up a, the car wash and I it was a great idea to pump another sign, I'm all for business. I don't think we, I don't think we need another car wash either, but we definitely don't need another place to buy liquor. It's just, it's readily available anywhere, but you can't almost every block in the city, you could, there's a place to buy liquor. I'm not sure that we need another one, so, uh, I appreciate you letting, letting me speak, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
So that was supposed to be anybody in favor? Is anybody else opposed that would like to speak? And then we can let the applicant address those or? Can you come forward and tell us your name?
Hi, my name is Rita Clifton, I live in the house directly across from the proposed site. I too believe we don't need another bar. You have geezers on the one side, you have bricks on the other, we have plenty of places to buy alcohol. We have very limited parking. As it is, the people that are there now take up tons of parking and there's times that I can't even get in my driveway because they block the parking. I know the, the spot directly in front of where he's proposing is handicapped, so that would be, you know, for the people that live there. We already have where people go by and throw garbage out, there's a big garbage mess always when you add a bar, no matter how well intended, there's going to be a mess, there's going to be, people take stuff out. It's, you know, that's inevitable. Also, I don't know what the bar brings, no matter what you intend for it to be, I'm sure when Shenanigans opened, they didn't intend for it to be a problem bar. It can, it can turn into one. Um, so you have the lack of parking, it, just a few weeks ago, between Third and Second on Washington, there was a shooting. Okay, so you don't need any, like he said, our, our neighborhood is fragile. We have kids that live there, we have adults, we have elderly people live there. It's trying, we're trying to keep it up as into a nice, a nice neighborhood, I don't believe we need a bar.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else opposed that would like to speak?
My name's Adam Anderson, I live on the fourteen fifty-one West Third Street, uh, across the street from the bar, and I just want to push on what she said. Our neighborhood is children, families and elderly people. And, I mean, our neighborhood's not looking for this, that's basically what I have to say. I mean, the parking is definitely the church on Wednesdays and Sundays. If you leave the house, you come back, you can't get a parking spot. That's already occurring, I've tried to get resident only parking. I have a nineteen by nineteen garage by my house and I can't behind my house, I can't get my truck into the garage to park, but I can't get the resident parking because of the building behind my house, so, um, like the other neighbors, we're just really not in favor. Thank you.
Would you like to address some of their concerns? Oh, sorry, one more, do we have anybody else that wants, I'm sorry. You're hiding behind the podium.
I'm Karen Fishline, I'm at fourteen twenty-three West Third Street. I'm with the rest of them, we don't need a bar there. There's bars down on Rockingham Road that's for sale, they need to go down there and look at them and fix them up, there's not houses there. We have an elderly neighborhood and with the, the police are having enough time trying to help solve the problem of drugs and drunks. We don't need another bar. If he wants to put a bar in, I would suggest he go down on Rockingham Road and get some of those taverns that's on sale, that's going out of its of those taverns that's on sale, that's going out of, it's been out of business, and fix that up and put their little games or whatever they wanna put in there. We've got Frick's on the corner, which is a very nice bar, very nice. When they have the celebration or shindig, the cars are parked all the way down to the street, there, there's a barber shop there, they park past there, on my side of the street, on the south side, they park there, and there's an Oscar Mayer parking lot that they park in there too. Where are the people that own their houses gonna park their cars? There is no other place beside in front of the house. Two nights ago, the barber shop, I don't know what they had going on, I don't think that many people wanted haircuts, but it was halfway from Frick's, down past the barber shop, on both sides of the street. When I got up the next morning to get my newspaper, there was garbage all over the street, even baby diapers thrown out. So me and my guy who rose, rose my yard, we went over, we had two bags of high B bags full, full of junk, and I knocked on the barber shop's door and I says, here's a present for you. And he says, oh my, he says, I didn't know that. And I said, well, you're gonna have to come out of your barber shop and you're gonna have to look, because I said, I'm not putting up with that. And I'm not gonna be putting up with drunks, the motorcycles come down Third Street lickety-split, waking me up in the middle of the night, and I don't like that either, because it's hard for me to get to sleep again. So, we all agree, it's an older neighborhood, we do not need a bar there. Go down on Rockingham and look at those bars, there was a, one guy who tried to get a bar in by Mother Hubbard's, back this way a little bit east, it didn't go through, and I'm hoping this doesn't go through. We don't need another bar. Maybe he might suggest a grocery store? I don't know, we could use one of those, you know, but not another bar, please, not another bar.
Thank you.
This is Scott Coops, Department of Development and Neighborhood Services. I, I am, I have heard the, the questions concerning parking. Parking in this district isn't required, there is some in the rear, but I was interested in what Mr. Andern, Adam Anderson said about, he wasn't able to get resident-only parking because there is the ability for residents, at least my understanding is, for residents to get resident-only parking directly in front of their homes. So maybe what he was requesting wasn't directly in front of his home, but that is an option, but I would be curious to hear what Mr. Anderson says about why he couldn't get resident-only parking. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Hi, Ryan Koff again. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for coming here in favor of our proposal. No, I, I wanna say I do totally understand the concerns of the people in this neighborhood, and part of the reason that we identified this particular property as a place that we could develop into the kind of bar we're looking at is because of exactly what one of the residents said about the potential of the neighborhood to go in one direction or the other. So, a developer like me could come in, put new siding on the place, put new solar panels on the place, put a new roof in, put security cameras up, make this place look really nice, make this corner good, or if it sits as is, the, the place is gonna continue getting further dilapidated, further, it's, it's not gonna go in the direction that they're wanting it to go. So, I understand these concerns, but I think these may also be concerns that simply exist because of where that neighborhood is, it's a mixed-use area. If you stand on the corner touching the building that we're proposing, you can see graffiti on the industrial building two blocks down. It's, you know, there's, there's, there's tremendous potential for this to be a very nice neighborhood where our nerdy bar, and it's not some podunk rodeo bar, could fit in really well and be a nice, calm place for people to come and enjoy themselves. And then there's the opportunity for this place to, to kind of stay vacant or, you know, turn into a, a grocery store that's really a liquor store, 'cause that was mentioned earlier. 'Cause to, to mention again, the, the C1 property could be a restaurant, could be all these other things, which still come with the same concerns about where are people going to park, what are these people gonna be doing, what are the hours, things like that. So, just the fact that it, being a bar, the only reason we're proposing that is 'cause it's easier on us to, to create one, and it would help us provide the, a more low-intensity atmosphere than if we were to have to put even more money in and make this a restaurant, which, you know, that's, that's the other option that's on the table for us, making this a nerdy-themed restaurant. We have plenty of nerdy-themed food ideas we wanna come up with and stuff like that, but as a restaurant, you know, we're allowed to still be open until 2:00 AM and have a liquor license and do all that without even having to come to this board. So, you know, I think a lot of those concerns might simply be part of living in this neighborhood, and I, I see a lot of potential for us to put money into this building and improve the building and improve the neighborhood, and I hope the, you know, the residents would consider that. We, we would be good neighbors. If there was someone throwing dirty diapers, you know, on the street, even within the block, I would send my employees out to clean that up, like, we would want this place to look nice. So I hope that answers some questions and maybe allays a few concerns, but, thank you.
So I have a question. So you said you were gonna have some parking in the back of your?
Yes.
How many people, how many parking stalls do you anticipate being able to have there?
So at a rough estimate, six to 10 or so. I haven't really measured out the place, but there is a, a very big kind of rocky parking area in the back that we're gonna pave and make nice and kind of make it a, a welcoming place with lines so that people can park there, so that they're not parking so much on the street. And I also would wanna assure that the, the residents that if we are approved for a bar here and they want to get residential parking permits for these streets so that people can't park there, we would have no objection to that, you know, we're on the record now, so if, if they have a, a meeting to get those, you know, we've said that we support that, we support the idea of residents having residential parking signs and placards so that they can have their own parking areas, so. Thank you.
Scott, what would they have to do to get the residential parking? What would the procedure be?
Well, I'm not an expert on what it takes, but they would call the Public Works Office and ask for resident-only parking, and then they'd go through the procedure. I, I believe it's basically, I don't know, they have to pay for the sign or whatnot, and I don't know, I believe it has to be directly in front of their house, it can't be in front of somebody else's house or in front of somebody else's business, but I don't know all the ins and outs of that. But the process would start by calling the Public Works Office. I, I will say about the, the parking at the rear, staff did not know that there was a lot of plans for parking in the rear other than maybe to, to retouch up the, the surface to make it smoother than what it was, but the, whatever, if they do something too, too, too large of a project size, it could trigger a lot of other requirements for storm waters and also landscaping and, and other things that probably don't fit on that site, given that you can only fit six to 10 vehicles on it. And that's part of why this district doesn't have parking requirements, is that in order to meet all of the requirements of our parking code, it, it doesn't work very well. And additionally, that this is a low-intensity use that doesn't need parking, it's a, a walkable use, it's a walkable neighborhood, it's a mixed-use neighborhood, and so by not having parking right available, it, it does encourage people to walk to the bar, people from the neighborhood to be at the bar.
Scott, is there an occupant seemingly figured out yet for this establishment, or is that?
Not to my knowledge. The fire department will be reviewing it and, and they will be putting their rating on it and they will be making sure it meets all their code requirements. If only the front portion of the building.
Question for the petitioner. Yeah, it's, it looks like a big building, it picks up the entire block.
Ryan Koff, petitioner?
Question, I guess, for the petitioner.
Go ahead.
I, I had a question for the petitioner in terms of the, the improvements to the, to the building. You know, will the, will the improvements, you know, the repaving, the siding, the regroupment, that's, will that, will all that be done prior to business opening?
Yes, we, we already provided actually in one of those stacks of paper, a quote we received from Innovations General Contracting. We've used them with suburban construction before to work on other properties that I've purchased that. Most recently, 1436 West 15th Street was this multiplex apartment unit, it had this ugly kind of tar siding that we had them come in and re-side, and now it's one of the, the best-looking places on that whole block. Thank you.
This is Lynn Cochran, I would like to ask the petitioner if there are any plans down the line for including food?
Um, yes, the, the theory is we might start offering some kind of nerdy food options, though the whole point of this bar though is to be a low-intensity nerdy hangout space, so people who like video game stuff, you know, Marvel movies, comic books, have a place for, to hang out. So, you know, we're not trying to, to start a, like, Mexican restaurant catering company or any that thing like that. If there is food, it would be a relatively limited menu, mainly 'cause then we'd have to have a kitchen and all, you know, performance food group delivering things and all this extra traffic, that, I just don't think fits in that area, so.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Question for petitioner, proposed use of the garage, is that just gonna be storage or?
Currently it is leased out to a tenant, so I think we'd lease it out to another business. Alternatively, it could be storage for the bar. I own a solar panel installation company, we could put solar panels in there, but I don't think we're going to, we have another warehouse which is much bigger. There, there's plenty of opportunity for that to be another business that is already allowed by the C1 code, so I think that would be a tenant space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Coops, I, I would like to point out that this is a C1 district and storage would not be allowed use, so, I mean, if there's ancillary things ancillary to the bar or to an apartment that's already there or something like that, you can use the garage for those items, but you can't have that building used just exclusively for storage of rental uses or for other industrial businesses or equipment or anything, it has to be related to the existing onsite C1 use or to an existing onsite apartment.
Thank you.
Brian McLean again from down the street. Do you know, Scott, what's already in the building right now? I'm sorry.
Um, no, I do not know, to my understanding it's vacant.
It's not, that's, and it's part of the problem. I love the city of Davenport and I wanna see it do well. I have a, I have little faith in, in our city government right now because currently there's tow trucks parked the wrong direction all day. For three weeks, there was a pickup truck with no engine sitting on the street.
Have you contacted the Neighborhood Services Division on that?
We have contacted Neighborhood Services.
Is there, is there ongoing?
Absolutely, absolutely, all, all up and down the street.
I can discuss that with them.
We struggle every time, everybody in the backyard, I, I haven't met Rita yet, hi, nice to meet you Rita. Almost on a weekly basis, we struggle with the city trying to get things done. The, this gentleman talked about the, the graffiti that was on the, the old Brainerd building?
Yeah, I think we have to keep the comments addressed towards what's being proposed here.
I understand that, but as a resident of the neighborhood, I think it's pertinent to, to the discussion in that we have a difficult time getting things taken care of in that neighborhood, for whatever reason, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm saying we have a difficult time. So, when we have to put our trust in the city to make sure that this establishment follows the rules, you can understand why we have concern when the rules already are not being followed. So I think it's, I think it's a fair point for us to stand up and say, hey, yeah, we don't want a bar here, he says he's gonna do this, this, and this, well, these are the rules and they're already not being followed. So, you can understand our concern with, let's not let something else in that's, that's, has to follow the rules, that may or may not follow the rules. I, I think it's a fair concern. The questions that I had were, if, I, I know this body doesn't issue liquor licenses, but you approved the, the, the use, the special use permit, is there any way, is there a proposed hours of service? Is it, or is it just blanket, just like every other bar in the city?
City staff does not regulate hours of bars, and I do not believe this commit, this board can have regulation of bars because that's superseded by the liquor license. Tom Warner is correct, is what he's saying. So we cannot regulate the hours of this bar.
Okay, okay, so that, you don't allow, okay. So that's another fair point too, 'cause we're, you know, we're kind of a small, really, really tight, tight community there, you know, just, once it's out of your guys' hands, it's gone, then we, it's automatically a two o'clock in the morning sort of thing. Or, you know, a lot of us, my neighbor gets up at, at 4:30 for work, I'm up by five, I don't need, you know, people out there with no mufflers and whatever else starting their cars, leaving, you know, leaving the bar, maybe drunk hitting my car on the way out, you know, all that sort of thing, things we don't necessarily worry about right now, but with, with another establishment selling liquor, you know, we might. And again, it's not personal, I think there's a lot of great buildings with a lot of great potential in our area. The, the actual Carpet Store, Keister's, right down the street, it's a beautiful old brick building, I'd buy, if I had the money, I'd buy, buy, buy it and put something in there myself. I just don't think that right in the middle of, there's houses all around there, there's a church, there's kids, there's, there's already enough, a number of traffic, I, I just think there's a lot better places in, in the city for an establishment like that, so, that's, that's my concern.
Ryan Koff here.
I would like to state that we've gotten off of our, our agenda and what we're allowed to do. We did allow someone to speak twice in opposition, so we will let the applicant speak one more time to, to rebut, but we, we cannot accept any more of what comments at this time.
My understanding is the back rooms usage, that tenant who is, has all these cars parked on the, the street, I, I've been told by one of the residents that that's a major source of concern, and it sounds like, from what I understand, that tenant isn't up to date on paying their rent anyway, so that tenant who is causing a major problem for this area, they would be evicted, and I would also wanna make myself personally available to these residents to, to be someone they can contact if there's something, some problem like that, so, thank you.
Okay, can we ask for a motion to approve the bar?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll second. I would like to clarify that this motion does involve the two conditions that recommended by staff.
Any board discussion?
Quinn, does this? Quinn, does this, does your motion include the two conditions?
Yes, it does, Scott.
Okay, I will read those two conditions. The first one is that the use should be limited to this property owner, should they sell it in whole or in part, more than 50%, it shall have to have another special, special use permit or a re, a rehearing of the special use permit. The second condition is that they provide us information on the ownership so we know if that's being changed or not.
Okay, should we call for a vote?
Yes, I would do, well, this, do, the board should have a chance to discuss the motion, and do we, we have a first by Quinn and a second, yeah, we have a second, so it's up to discussion point at this point, only amongst the, the board members.
Okay, no, let's call for the vote.
Okay, so I'll do, we'll call a vote now.
No.
Quinn?
Yes.
Darlin?
Yes.
And Lu Beck?
Yes.
Motion approves, three to one.
Okay, no other business, motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.
Second?
Second.
Adjourn.